Unless Barry you called in. Barry's not in.
Clearing us up to go live.
Okay, Darryl, is Mary with you?
Yes, she just came in.
Has she heard from Barry?
I have not. Would you like me to go call him?
Sure, just, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm in here.
Alright, we're live on YouTube.
Alrighty, alright, so we'll give one more minute for folks to join and then we'll kick off this planning commission meeting. Thank you all for joining. Ren Flanders is my chief of staff, you hear her in the background, she'll be doing a lot of the emceeing from the background DJing this thing so that we make sure we get public input for folks who want to make comments. They can actually go on to the channel and through the city of Alaria's webpage, cityofalaria.org, go to the planning commission page and you can actually click into this meeting. And when it comes time for proponents and opponents of things, we'll provide a space for folks to engage. And yeah, so it's now 11 o'clock and I'm calling this meeting to order officially, our Alaria Planning Commission, Tuesday, May 5th, 11 a.m. and we are in the virtual city council chambers right in your home, so I'm gonna start with the roll call. And Ashley, you helped me out a lot last meeting, was it you that was helping me out with the roll calls and whatnot?
I don't recall, to be honest with you.
Okay, it's been a while. Would you mind doing the roll calls for me?
Oh, no, no problem, Tom Aiden. Losing my screen here, Sam Battle. Barry Hubbard.
Hold on, Sam, Sam, you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I don't.
Let me see.
No.
Oh, there he is.
Sam, Sam was there, he just didn't have his, he was muted.
Alright, he's unmuted, alright, let's do that one more time, Ashley.
Alright, Sam Battle.
Here.
Barry Hubbard.
Okay, can I interrupt for one minute, please? I did talk to Barry and he said he may be joining us late, if at all, because his wife was having some type of surgery this morning.
Okay, okay.
So he may be joining us late.
So as of now, we have an excused absence from Barry Hubbard. And so, let's start the roll call over, I apologize, let's start the roll.
I'm sorry.
Alright, you want to certain back to Tom here?
Yep, from the top, Sam Battle, unmute.
Alright, Tom Aiden. Sam Battle. Barry Hubbard. Excused, Chad Schneider.
Here.
Don Calvert.
Here.
Mayor Whitfield.
Here.
Derek Tedrow.
Here.
Alright, I want to recognize we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so we do have a quorum for today's meeting. And again, thank you all for taking time to be here, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th planning commission meeting.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don Calvert, is there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And were there any bit abstaining?
I abstained, I was asked him last week. Or last month, I apologize.
Yep, and we have an abstain from Derek.
Leave my mic on.
Yeah, your mic's on, Mr. Battle, we can hear you.
Okay, good, alright, good, okay.
So there's no miscellaneous correspondence, no new business, so we're going to, right to old business and we'll be talking first about the Pearl Developer Project. And let's start with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is regarding the properties parcels located between East Bridge and East River Street. Also being known as a re-subdivision of a part of original Alaria Township, lot number 60, 62, and 63. East of the Black River, as described in deeds to Lorain County Port Authority, as recorded in instrument numbers 2017-0627-873 and 2020-075-1965 of Lorain County deed records. The request, the proponent is requesting to combine multiple parcels into one distinct section. The lots consist of eight parcels listed as follows. last three digits, 008, 007, 008, 009, etc. My findings. The current zoning for all the parcels is business general, the requirements of which can be found in the Alaria Codified Ordinance, Section 1160. The purpose of a business general district is to accommodate and encourage those business establishments offering a multitude of principally permitted uses, i.e. allied health facilities, automotive sales, childcare facilities, clubs, commercial recreation, convenience businesses, dental medical clinics, drive-in facilities, educational institutions, fast food government buildings, hospitals, restaurants, residential, except detached dwellings of three household or less, shopping goods and household services, etc. Note, the purpose of the lot consolidation is to accommodate a new residential three-story, 62 permanent supporting housing facility. Staff recommendation. The above information complies with the spirit and intent of the zoning code.
Thank you, Darryl, and so from my understanding, there's multiple requests during this meeting, so this is the first request, is that correct?
This is the first phase in order to the move to the next request. A lot consolidation is needed and must be approved through planning commission since it is in excess of five parcels per the zoning code. This consists of eight. The nice thing is, all the parcels are zone business general, which does assist in the decision-making factor from a zoning standpoint. I wanted to mention in closing for the, the purpose is to accommodate a 62-unit permanent supportive housing facility for the board's consideration.
Thank you for that, Mr. Farkas. And so, I'd like to open it up for the folks from Pearl to kind of give some context to this project. You talked, I know it's been a while, this project has been on the radar for a while, but if you could provide some context of what this project is, Mr. Farkas alluded to it, but if someone from Pearl is able to speak to that, we'd like to hear.
Sure, so this is Greg Barron from Pearl Developers. I just want to start off by thanking Mayor Whitfield as well as members of the commission and city staff, I know this is kind of a unique situation, so we appreciate you guys moving this forward. A little background on Pearl. So I'm sure some of the commission members or people on the call here are familiar with Pearl. We're an integrated developer general contractor. The focus of Pearl is typically on affordable housing, we also do some market rate development and construction as well. We have a pretty big footprint, a lot of our projects were headquartered in Ohio and a lot of our projects were in Ohio. In terms of permanent supportive housing in this specific project, it's in partnership with Eden Inc. Eden has about a dozen or so permanent supportive housing projects throughout Cuyahoga County. Pearl has recently gained some experience in constructing permanent supportive housing projects, specifically in Cuyahoga County and the city of Cleveland on West 25th Street. We're about three months out from finishing construction of St. Joseph's. It's a similar building, 668 units total. This specific project, as Mr. Farkas had mentioned, it's 62 total units. They're all one in, one bedroom, one bathroom units, with a focus on permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals. From a big picture financing standpoint, we are awarded low-income housing tax credits from OFA in 2019. That by far is the biggest piece of financing for both development and construction costs. The award of tax credits from OFA actually amounts to $10.5 million for construction. We also have a federal home loan bank, what they call an AHP loan, and that's through the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati, that's for a million dollars that we've been awarded. There's also funding through Lorain County Mental Health Board, OMAS, the Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services, as well as the NORD Family Foundation, so it's a $13 million project. All financing for construction is in place at this point. We're obviously moving through due diligence, finalizing plans and specs. Another big piece for us was the PSH model typically requires or, you know, it's necessary for us to seek project-based Section 8 vouchers. We were successful, good news for us, we were successful in getting an award from the Lorain Metropolitan Housing Authority a couple of months back. So we're moving through the process with them as well. You know, honestly, we're honored to be in the city of Alaria, we look forward to it, we love the community. We think this is a great site for construction. We've done a lot of outreach to neighbors and the neighborhood groups, I have a dialogue or we have dialogues with all the surrounding neighbors. You know, so we do plan to move forward. Next steps for us are obviously getting over this hump here, having this conversation and seeing where things turn out. Finalizing plans and specs, finalizing construction pricing. The intent right now is to move forward with closing on financing and starting construction at the end of August 2020. So with that, I'm not sure if there are specific questions about the project, but in terms of the lot consolidation, again, we appreciate this opportunity. We have a purchase agreement with the Lorain County Port Authority. It was somewhat slow-moving for us, one of eight parcels was titled to the Lorain County Land Reutilization Corp. So they, the port, it's essentially one of the same as you guys know. The Port Authority was able to sign that parcel over, so now all eight parcels are owned by the Port Authority. Obviously, they're in support of the project, we talk with them on a regular basis, and our site control for the lot takes us out to the end of 2020.
Thank you for that, Greg. Any other staff reports before we go to the commission members and then we'll go to proponents and opponents, so any other staff reports? Jim, you got anything you want to add to this, okay? If not, we can wait until the proponents and opponents piece. I'll provide some context, I got a chance to visit one of the Eden facilities out in Cleveland and got a chance to tour it, I know there's been a lot of concern about the kind of not in my backyard sort of going, and I live in this neighborhood, so you know, there's been, there was even concern from us about, you know, what does this mean for our neighborhood as we're walking around with kids and things like that is, you know, Greg, if you could maybe speak to like the background checks, I got a chance to see how these things operate, it's not a homeless shelter where people just drop in randomly. This is for folks who have been chronically homeless, who are looking to have stability in their lives and they're living in, it's just like an apartment complex for folks and but if Greg, if you could kind of speak to that, I know that's a major concern.
Sure, yeah, so it's, as you mentioned, it's not a typical homeless facility where people could just come and go as as they desire, it's a really structured environment. The financing that we have in place really, really demands that there's a pretty in-depth screening process for all tenants. The tax credits through OFA demand a tenant income certification, so they go through all financial statements and and background, do background checks on all the tenants. The building itself has 24-hour monitored security. So no one can just, there's not multiple doors where people could just enter the facility, it's it's pretty structured, you have to get buzzed in, you have to come through the front door. Visitors are screened. It's, yeah, again, it's not a typical homeless facility, it's extremely structured. Mayor, I assume that when you visited one of the facilities, you saw that the grounds were kept up, the buildings are beautiful. You know, and from what I found in my experience, I'm sure some of my Pearl colleagues you know, would reiterate what I'm saying here, but it's, it's, they're pretty quiet buildings. It's not, you know, again, they're one bedroom, one bath, it's not like there's larger families living in these units. You know, noise levels are low, it's pretty secure, pretty tight. You know, and I know Eden as property manager and our partner on the project, they really strive to be good neighbors.
Right, Greg, this is Brian from HDNS, if I could add to that. Unfortunately, Richard, it doesn't seem like Richard's on this call today from Eden, but previous facilities that I'm sure you, you've all, those of you who have visited the facilities have observed, although the residents have the stigma of having been chronically homeless, they are now housed, once they are accepted into this property and the project, and they are assigned a caseworker that works with them on a very routine basis to maintain any medications that they need, to maintain employment, to maintain basically a standard of quality of life. And as, as he mentioned, this is not a homeless shelter, these people live here permanently, which is where the name is derived, permanent supportive housing, and the turnover rate of these facilities is very much like an apartment building, so people stay here for years on end, and it is run, it is more of an apartment building than any kind of stigmatized homeless shelter.
Mr. Farkas, could you speak to just the process and where we are, just to provide some context, and not only where the project is, but also there's multiple things we're voting on here today, if you could speak to that, and then what next steps are in terms of if this goes through, what would be the next steps?
Okay, this, this is, we'll call phase one, which is consolidating all the lots into one parcel number and one assigned address. Now, once, if the board grants this approval for this replat, it would go to plan a commission to be signed, you'd work with Jim Taylor, the planning commission attorney, and have it signed, it would move forward for acceptance. Once that is complete, it would then shift to our next case, which is for the variance request for the parking spaces. Now, we have not received any official plan submittal, because it would be premature, until we've actually got the go-ahead, making sure we can consolidate, and then if they want to, whatever the board decides on the next case for parking, they can adjust with the plan submittal accordingly. So that's pretty much the process.
Thank you, Mr. Farkas. Alright, questions from the commission? And I hope you heard that this is, this is going to be multifaceted, but I think we can ask broader questions of Pearl related to zoning. And then we will go into the variance and everything else, so.
When we did the lot, didn't we approve a lot split at the last, like, meeting or two meetings ago with the same project, or is this because of that one parcel?
We, Derek, we can answer, but we did not have a completed consolidation map at that time, that's what we were waiting for.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions for the commission, from the commission?
Mayor, are we, are we just at, are the questions right now just limited to the zoning and the layout, or?
Because it's such a broad, because this is such a broad piece, I think that I want to open the space for any questions, because there's so many different factors to it, I just want to get them all out now.
Understandable. Okay, so Brian and Greg, we talked about, you talked about security a little bit. Are we talking like a security officer 24 hours, are we talking counselors that are working shifts? How exactly is there security inside the building?
Yeah, and I apologize, I could have been more clear on that. The, so there's a front desk and it's, you have to get buzzed in to enter the building, so the building itself is locked 24 hours a day, obviously staff have access to get inside. But whether you're a tenant or a visitor, you have to come through that front door and get buzzed in.
Alright, alright, and are your tenants, are the, are the tenants, are they restricted to certain hours? Where they, I mean, is there like a, do they have to be in at night at a certain time, or are they, are they free to come and go as they please?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty, although it's structured, I mean, they, they try to, you know, because it is implementing them back into a normal way of life, they do have access in and out of the building, so it's.
Okay. Just trying to, just trying to gauge what this compares to as, like, to a three-quarter house or something like that, but it doesn't sound like it's that.
No. Yeah. Yeah, and as Brian mentioned, I mean, with, with having a specific caseworker assigned, I mean, they're, it's constant, it really is, with medication, with, with mental therapy, with mental health, that kind of thing, so it's it's different than a normal three-quarter way house, that's for sure.
Yeah, in fact, what we've, what we've found is that, again, going back to this, the stigma of people having been homeless and say, a threat to the neighborhood, these people are essentially, they're found to be more at risk of people from their old life coming to that space, and so that's why the security is there to protect the people while they're in their homes.
Agreed, yeah, yeah. I think that's all I have, so.
Great question.
Appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Great question.
Thank you.
Alright, so the first piece we're going to be voting on is for the consolidation of the lot, and so I'll read this off the request, oh, I'm not going to read off all these parcels. Let me open up the floor, is there any proponents, is there any proponents of this, any proponents? Any proponents, any opponents, any opponents? Any opponents? Alright, hearing now, we're going to go ahead and vote on the first piece of this, which is to request to combine the multiple parcels into one distinct section. And the lots consist of the eight lots that Mr. Farkas read off into a new lot that will consist of 2.87 acres. Can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Who was that?
Sam Battle.
Move by Mr. Battle, is there a second?
Second, by Derek Tedrow.
Second by Derek Tedrow. Any other further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And were there any abstentions? Alright, motion passed unanimously. The next piece we have on the same project is around the parking variance. So I'll give the quick skinny on this one, so Darryl, you want me to take this one?
Be my guest.
Yeah, let me see.
He still, he still has to issue a staff report though, Frank, but.
Okay, go ahead, Darryl, I'll let you do your thing.
Oh, alright, thank you, sir. Okay. The subject is the recently consolidated parcels located on East Bridge and East River, with the address to be assigned 338 East Bridge Street. The request, the proponent is requesting a variance from Section 1175.06AA of the Alaria Codified Ordinance governing off-street parking and loading. Number of spaces required, findings. The current zoning of the site is zone business general, the requirements of which can be found in the Alaria Codified Ordinance, Section 1160. As referenced in subsection 1160.10 Parking Requirements, specifically refers to Section 1175 Governing Off-Street Parking and Loading. The purpose of the structure is a residential housing facility, permanent supportive housing facility consisting of 62 units. The codified ordinance specifically, Section 1175.06AA, residential multi-household, requires two spaces for each dwelling unit. 62 times 2 equals 124 spaces needed. The proponent is requesting 27 spaces be permitted. Staff recommendations. I have researched, the codified ordinance have listed some of the interests for the board's use and consideration regarding this request. The area in question is an existing subdivision of record with eight lots that have been recently consolidated via a replat, case number 2020-100015. This information is intended to provide a guide as to the spirit and intent of the zoning code, assuring minimum standards are maintained not only for this site, but the neighboring homes and businesses. And I list chapter 1112 Design Standards, of which states the provisions of Section 1112.02 through Section 1112.16 of the Alaria Codified Ordinance inclusive shall control the manner in which streets, public utilities, lots, blocks, and other physical elements of subdivisions are to be arranged on land. Subdivision design principles and standards shall help ensure convenient and safe streets, the creation of usable lots, provisions of adequately sized public utility systems, and the reservation of land for receptional purposes. The planning of an attractive and functional neighborhood shall be promoted, and the impact of the subdivision development shall have on its provision, the community facility and character of adjoining areas will be evaluated in order to ensure the continuation of an orderly and desirable residential community within the city of Alaria. The planning commissioner shall consult with the appropriate city staff to ensure that all design standards are met within the subdivision development. Chapter 1137.03 Reducing Yard Lot Coverage and Parking also states, no lot, yard, court, parking area, or other space shall be reduced in area or dimension as to make such area or dimension thereof less than the minimum required under this zoning code. And no part of the required yard, court, or other open space shall be provided about, about any building or other structure shall be included as part of the required yard, court, or other space in other building or other structures, it gives the ordinance number. Staff recommendation. The above request proposes a great reduction in the required spaces needed for a new facility of this nature. It would establish a non-conforming use for any future use of this site, if different than currently proposed. It should be considered that the minimum standard described herein is to provide adequate parking for not only the proposed residents, but visitors as well. The parking facility, if reduced, may encourage an abundance of off-street parking, of which very little is provided in this particular area. Promote parking on an unapproved surface, i.e. grass, or utilize adjacent business and parking spaces if none are available. As this information is intended to guide the board as to the potential side effects of the parking reduction, if approved, it is recommended the board encourage the parking requirement set forth herein to be enforced. In closing, I am not in favor of this request as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Farkas. And so, we spent a lot of time talking about this internally, as Mr. Farkas mentioned. Our code says this should have 124 parking spots, and you're proposing 27, and so we definitely think that, you know, our agreement for the usage of this space, I believe the terms will be 30 years that this will be specifically, but Jim, why don't you speak to this, kind of the discussion we had in terms of.
One more thing before I do, Mr. Mandoke has just chimed in, can we see what fire department staff recommendation is, if they have anything on this, and then I'll talk.
Okay.
The fire department would, would just need fire apparatus access to the building. Just so access is granted. Otherwise, no comment.
Okay, and then, Darryl, that, anything with fire would obviously be dealt with with the plans, etc., correct?
Yes, the preliminary plans for this, last year, if I'm not mistaken, came in and it did show a secondary road access between two existing residential homes. And I haven't seen anything since those plans were submitted. But once we get to that point, of course, it'll go through the natural course of zoning review again and be submitted to the subsequent departments for their input.
Thank you. Alright, just from the legal standpoint, two comments, as the mayor said, this is approximately, and the applicant can chime in if I'm incorrect, a 30-year lease agreement or project. Again, after the 30 years, there could be a renewal, there could be a cessation of that activity there. From a legal standpoint, if you approve 27, once you approve 27, that's a permanent approval process. And so, we're stuck with 27, 30 years from now, that's my first comment that concerns, had concerns from a legal perspective. And then basically, the second is off-street parking, everybody's aware of where this location is. I have not gone to all the Cleveland or Cuyahoga County locations, but most of them appear to be in more residential neighborhoods with off-street parking. We have none on East Bridge Street, we have none basically on East River of any substance. The closest off-street parking would be on the street, now, Darryl, maybe you know the name of the street, I went blank, where the cemetery is behind Smitty.
That would be Ridge Street.
Ridge Street, sorry, thank you. And Ridge Street only would have so much parking and no direct access to this parcel, you'd have to cut through backyards or other properties to get to this, so again, that concerns me that there's no off-street parking, so 27 covers handicaps, any staffing and residences, and I know they're all single-family, that's the thing on the other side of the equation, they're all one-bedroom apartments, so you won't have multiple families. Some you'll have a husband and wife possibly, some are, and again, the applicant can speak to this. A lot of them may or may not have vehicles, but we have to look at the short range and the long range and the off-street parking, and you're making your decision, those are, those are my comments from the legal standpoint.
Any other comments from any other staff, if not, would like to get some feedback from from the Pearl team.
Sure, and Mayor, I previously submitted a PowerPoint presentation. If okay with it, I can attempt to share my screen.
Um, sure.
I'll give it a try here, let me see.
I'll stop sharing mine. Can you all see that okay?
Does everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah. Sure.
Yes.
Alright. Um and I apologize, I should have introduced Brian Grant Board, who's our architect from HDMS Architects, so um as previously mentioned, it's a partnership with Eden and Pearl Developers. Here's a artist rendering, a perspective rendering of the project, once it's all complete. And beautiful building, well-maintained.
Hey Greg, I'm not seeing the screen change. I'm still seeing the same uh PDF, the first page of the PDF.
Same here, there we go.
There you go.
Alright.
Yep.
Alright. Okay, so here's the the perspective rendering of the project. Lot consolidation, which obviously we already discussed and was previously approved. Code compliance, this just kind of regurgitates what Mr. Farkas had said that the code. Here is a architectural site plan of the project. As previously discussed, the site plan itself includes a twenty-foot wide fire lane uh that would exit out on the East River Street. Uh and and we'll get into it a little bit deeper, but you know, we we feel based on experience, based on, you know, more than as in permanent supportive housing projects, we feel that the twenty-seven parking spaces more than appropriate for this building style. Uh to speak what Mr. Taylor had said about uh the thirty-year commitment, so the finance that we're using requires a, it's initially a fifteen-year, but then we agree to a an additional fifteen years, which takes us up to the thirty-year requirement to maintain this building. And that is um you know, baked into a restrictive covenant that we execute. Um and so the building will stay as a permanent supportive housing project for a minimum of thirty years. Um you know, the way the building is being constructed, as we mentioned, the one-bedroom units with one bathroom. Um you know, so if if the use did turn uh and ended up being a market rate project, for example, uh the the construction itself and the the unit layout really doesn't lend itself to a market rate project.
And Greg, we we should also say that the one-bedroom units are single occupant, there are no husband and wives, there's no couples. No two people is sixty-two, sixty-two occupants, so.
Sure.
So I have a question on that, is it, is there no children then, or if you have like one child and you're homeless, can you go into a one-bedroom, how do you guys handle that?
Yeah, so so they are allowed, the construction now is they are allowed uh children, that's correct, Kevin Brown, right? I know Kevin's on as well.
Yeah, this is Kevin Brown and Vice President of Development with Pearl Developers, I can address some of these questions. Typically, we would ask Eden to address these kinds of questions as the property manager. But I would say in the 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 permanent supportive housing developments that Eden currently uh in Kyoka County, they do not house any children currently. Um under fair housing, if someone is a guardian of a child, they would be able to um bring a bring that child into their apartment and care for them. But being chronically homeless uh means that you've been uh homeless for a period of more than twelve months or had more four episodes of homelessness within three years. And I know that that means that you've also had, if you did have custody of your children, it been taken away from you as well. Practical purposes, anybody that's coming into into uh dying for chronically homeless individuals, they do not have custody of their kids.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Taylor, the one question, if you do show stability and some of these are long-term tenants and they do a five-year residency there, then would that be a fair statement to say they would have a better chance to qualify for a guardianship or a custody arrangement? If and when they can show permanency?
I mean, certainly they would, um but these apartments are small one-bedroom apartments, they're designed to be livable apartments, but not designed to be luxury apartments that encourages someone to stay long-term if they've gained employment, found a significant other, sort of gotten their life back together. Uh and there's very strict rules, as Greg mentioned, which uh you are free to come go as you please, but you're not allowed to have um un sort of unannounced overnight guests. Meaning you can have an overnight guest, but you have to give advance notice to the management company that you are having an overnight guest. And you can't have an overnight guest for more than so many days in a row, I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head. And as we stated, there's a lot of sort of controls in play to make sure that the tenants living there are not further victimized and that they're provided a stable environment for their continued growth recovery, uh their ability to maintain medication if they're on medication, to hopefully gain employment, and hopefully to reconnect with loved ones.
You said advanced notice, how 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 many, how long before the notice?
I think you have to give a twenty-four-hour notice if you're gonna have an overnight guest.
How many staff people will be at the site throughout the day?
Yeah, and so one thing that's interesting about a permanent supportive housing development, in addition to being a a community development project, it's a bit of a mini economic development project in that typically you're gonna be employing somewhere between twelve to fifteen people at a per at a new permanent supportive housing facility. Uh because uh you would have a full-time manager, there will be a full-time maintenance person, they would be there during normal business hours. Uh the case management um would be, let's see, typically three to five case managers. I would think probably three to four with this number of units would be staffed and they'd be staffed during normal business hours. But there would be a case manager on all twenty-four hours a day. Greg mentioned the front, the front desk is a twenty-four-hour-a-day staffed front desk. And as he mentioned, no one has a key to the building, you have to be let into the building. And what that means is Eden will hire staff for like the first two shifts. And of course, they'll get to know the the tenants that are there, and if guests come up, they will stop them and say, I need to take make a photocopy of your ID, which will put uh which will kind of stop a lot of unwanted activity. And once you're in the building as a guest, you have to be, uh the person you're visiting has to come down to meet you and you have to be escorted throughout the building at all times. Now, on the third shift or the overnight, typically it's a security company and Eden works with a uh I think it's Atlantic, but I I'd have to check the exact security company where they've had a relationship in the past. And they've been able to have uh security uh officers who have been trained in fair housing, who understand the issues and uh the population that's being housed there. So there is someone at the front desk twenty-four hours a day.
So during those peak staffing hours, which I'm assuming is normal business hours, maybe eight to five, seven to six, something along those lines.
That's a fair statement.
How many um I I mean, I'm really just looking at the parking and wondering how many of those parking spots are gonna be reserved for staff during the busiest staffed hour?
Well, I hate to say reserved, and Greg, I think was gonna talk about some of the parking coming up here, but we can certainly give you data as to the parking usage at other facilities in Kyoka County. As Greg mentioned, Eden has twelve other developments that are operational in Kyoka County, uh more than I think it's close to seven hundred units of permanent supportive housing now. And it this is a typical part, actually, this is a higher parking ratio than what we provide in similar buildings in Kyoka County at very similar locations, frankly. Um and what we find is less than fifty percent of the tenant population actually owns a car. Uh more than reserve rely upon a bicycle or public transit, or getting rides from case managers to uh to meet their travel needs. So there's no reservation of parking spaces for staff necessary. Typically with a twenty, with another permanent supportive housing facility in Kyoka County, um there's usually no more than, I think, five to eight cars there at any given time.
Yeah, and that's sideways, I I assume you guys can see the the screen still. Part of the PowerPoint presentation here is to give some parking ratios for other permanent supportive housing projects. Uh so one example would be the Buckeye Square Apartments, it's on Buckeye Road in Cleveland. Plus sixty-six units, and again, just as a reminder, this project is sixty-two units. There's twenty-two total parking spaces, which gives us a ratio of one space per three residential units. Another example would be in Mayor Whitfield, I believe this is the facility that you had uh visited. Um the Commons at West Village on Detroit Avenue, it's sixty-six units, there's twenty-two spaces, it's one space per three residential units. Another example would be the INS Killingsworth Point, that's east one hundred and thirty-first street, again, one parking space per three residential units as a comparison. Uh Green Bridge Commons, Upland Avenue, which is near Cleveland Clinic, hundred and thirty units. There's two phases associated with this one, and it only has forty-four parking spaces. Again, one parking space per three residential units. Uh Harper's Point, which is, I believe, under construction right now uh through Eden Cleveland Housing Network. This is one space per four residential units. Um Bridgepoint Commons with sixty-two units, twenty-seven spaces, it's a better ratio, there's one space per two point three. You know, conversations with Eden, uh the other dozen or projects that they have. As Kevin mentioned, there's typically, you know, five to seven vehicles at any given point.
Do those other locations, do they all have um the availability of street parking?
Some of them do, some of them do. Um you know, I I use the example of the one near Cleveland Clinic, I think that one's a little bit more difficult. Again, twenty-seven spaces, if if there's only a handful of tenants at any given point that uh that have vehicles, uh twenty-seven seems more than adequate for a project like this.
This is Kevin Brown, again, I I would just add that the the location of uh the Bridgepoint Commons pro development is very similar to development locations in the city of Cleveland. Uh typically, those permanent supportive housing facilities are main are located on arterials. Much like this location at the edge of residential neighborhoods, much like this location. So the availability of on-street parking is typically limited because of its more commercial location. Um I I would agree that that some locations do have access to some on-street parking, though.
Another um another difference I see um is Lorain County does not have as robust a public transit system. Um which makes us a little more reliant on automobile transportation, whether that be Uber or or whatever it is. So I think I'm looking at it from that perspective as well, that unfortunately, we we currently just don't have a lot of public transit available.
They're muted, Brian.
Uh sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, uh there there does appear to be a um the local public transit and county line. There's a stop less than a two-minute walk, I think, from the from the site, I believe.
That's correct, it's 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 correct, it's limited to where you can go from that public transportation, very limited. They've had cuts, etc., but we have transportation, but as Don said, nothing compared to Cleveland, obviously with RTA, etc.
Understood.
And and this is Kevin Brown, again, I would certainly agree with that comment, transportation system is limited in comparison. Uh but the location of the site offers many advantages, given its proximity to healthcare, to pharmacy, to uh public spaces, and to grocery shopping. Uh all those uh all those amenities are within a third of a mile of the site.
You know, other questions from uh the commission? Um I think that what I hear is, if what I've heard, just through dialogue we've had internally, um is that we're not comfortable with just the twenty-seven spots. Uh we were looking at something at least um, you know, sixty slots, so one per per um per unit. Again, we're thinking, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, we're thinking about long-term here, hopefully our mission is met and all these folks move to stability and they become homeowners and uh this the location can be repurposed for something down the road, you know, thirty years from now when we address homelessness as a community. Um and so how does that impact the project, is the project still able to move forward? If we um if we're unable to request this variance, but uh are able to do a variance, but just that uh sixty parking spots?
Alright, Kevin.
Yep. Mayor Whitfield, I would like to uh one thing that if, in looking through the the municipal code, one thing that caught my eye and I was curious about because it it appears in section eleven seven five, eleven seventy-five point oh one general requirements that there is the possibility with the, it says whenever a building or use constructed or established after the effective date of this code has changed or enlarged, infliorer, number of employees, number of dwelling seating capacity, otherwise uh to create a need for an increase of ten percent or more in the number of existing parking spaces. Parking spaces, excuse me, such spaces shall be provided on the basis of the enlargement or change. It seems like there's ability for the, if if the use or the the building is sold after thirty years for additional parking spaces to be added at that time, and it gives the city the ability to compel the addition of those parking spaces. Again, we've stated that we're providing one-bedroom apartments, which admittedly i- is appropriate for the population we're looking to serve, but may not necessarily be the most marketable building in the future if the use were to change. So it seems like there is an opportunity to uh require or add additional parking spaces at a later date. They wanted the benefits of the site is that there is sufficient space to add additional parking spaces in the future.
So are you saying, and Daryl looks like, did you wanna chime in, Daryl?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Uh the intent, we all have to keep in mind, this is a brand-new lot that is been consolidated and being constructed and is uh the process of going through as a new structure. We have to consider it just as that and take that into consideration, that the intent is to provide this for not only this use, but future uses as well. Um the board has to consider that originally when this was submitted, uh it did show the co-compliant parking spaces, it just showed a reconfiguration of the location. I assume the reduction was cost of asphalt and economical water discharge, etc. Uh this code section is intended for areas where there are real restrictions, where you cannot achieve this kind of parking spaces. Unfortunately, this project does afford the ability to provide the parking spaces. And Mayor, to back up to your comment of affording sixty spaces, uh please keep in mind, per the building code, three of those would be designated for uh handicap accessibility.
Yep.
So most of the time, those may not be taken, those may be taken, so just food for thought.
Yep. So back to to the Pearl team, is this a deal breaker with uh the additional parking? Or are we able to find a way to work this out with increasing the parking?
Well, I would like to add one more comment, too, I mean, we can then we can talk about the additional parking and let Greg may want to address that, but you know, certainly our goal is to reduce the amount of asphalt, um what we're proposing, I think, is the same or even less amount of uh asphalt that's currently on the site. And it's also an attempt to try to keep uh more of a buffer in green space around the building. The benefit of the residence, the aesthetics of the project, and also to provide more uh a buffer of green space between the building and the residential neighbors to the north.
And now, do you wanna speak to the parking spot piece?
Yes, I I correct me if I'm wrong, the question is, how does this factor in that to destruction completion? So obviously, we'll still move forward, um we have site plan approval. We still intend to close the project in August and start construction. We, obviously, there's some financial impacts here, um I believe Clarence Watkins from Bramhall Engineering is on as well. Um in Clarence, if you're on, if you if it's possible for you to speak to the stormwater retention and how you know, especially at a hundred and twenty-four parking spaces, how that changed the changes.
No, we're not, we're not recommending a hundred and twenty-four.
Sure, sure, we haven't.
We were trying to meet you halfway, we we. We were trying to meet you halfway, we, we understood, this is a different project. Uh, but we were just too far away from twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-four, so we thought the fair thing was to find someplace in the middle.
Understood, understood, a- a- and I guess what I was getting at is, I don't know what type of impact sixty parking spaces will have on the site. You know, will we still need stormwater retention, I'm not sure. So I think, obviously, there's going to be some, some deeper diving that we're going to have to do to figure this out. So, eh, that's all, either way, we're moving forward. Uh, there's a financial impact, and then there's more due diligence we'll have to, have to consider as we move forward.
So, um, so it looks like we're going to, um. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, commission, we're comfortable with, um, sixty dedicated spots, not including handicap. Um, for this, uh, for this facility, or is there a different number? How are you feel, commission members?
So it would be sixty-three, including handicap, is that what I'm understanding? Is that the number, it has to have three?
Said it was three, we had checked on that earlier, I believe, three, Daryl, is that correct? The, the building code requires that whatever number spacings you provide, certain amount of those have to be designated for handicap accessibility. So at the number sixty, you're going to lose three technically for handicap accessibility, though they will exist.
So it's fifty-seven and three handicap?
Yes, sir. Or sixty and three, whichever way you.
Thanks.
So what I was recommending or suggesting was, uh, sixty parking spots. And then the, whatever the code says has to be compliant for, to add whatever handicap needs to be added to that. But it would be sixty on non-handicap parking spaces that we will require as a part of this variance.
Hey Greg? So, well, as you were explaining what, uh, or as we talked about these, uh, as we talked about these extra parking spots. You gave me the idea that we would, if we had to add those extra parking spots, that area where the retention pond would be. That would be where that space would be used. That, would that be our only option in parking spaces for there?
Yeah, I mean, we're going, you know, I mean, more than the twenty-seven, then the, the parking essentially wraps around the, the building. Let me try.
Back of the building, yeah. You wouldn't want it out in the, to this front grassed area.
That's correct, and I think, I don't know that Kevin straight out asked this, but I, I think he was alluding to it, is there. Is there a possibl- like the whole land banking concept, there is sufficient land? You know, is there a possibility to have a reduced number and then, uh, have that, that, again, thirty years from now? There's a lot of time between now and then, the use changes, there's plenty of land to land bank parking for the future.
You know, I think that the staff internally has spent a lot of time, and you could hear they've done a lot of research on this and tried to. It's been a lot of negotiation even get to this number itself, I mean, so there's been a lot of work done internally to get to this, the sixty number, so.
We, we appreciate that, yeah.
So if there's no other, are, so I'm going to open it up to the floor, um, and we can open the lines, are there any other proponents of this, any other proponents?
This is Bramhall Engineering, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Um, speaking to the issue that Greg brought up about, uh, the parking lot and the underground detention, right now. With the twenty-seven parking spaces, we're using it at Great Basin, so. It's the easiest way to accomplish stormwater management. If we add these additional spaces. We're going to be impacting that footprint, we may have to have a combination of. Some underground stormwater storage and an at-Great Basin, we'd have to accommodate both of them. But we think it could be fairly done, one, one of the things that you have right now. Is we have a parking lot and then a one-way-out fire lane. If we were to wrap around the back of the building with some parking. We'd have to keep some of that drive wider so that there'd be two-way access, people could pull into those parking spaces. And then leave again the way they came in. And then narrow the drive down as it goes towards River Street, because that is strictly going to be a fire exit. Now, the only way the fire trucks can really access this site is to go in one way and out the other way. But as far as can we, I think we can add the parking spaces to meet the new requirement easy enough. I doubt that we're going to be able to do it strictly with an at-Great Basin. We may have to have a combination, some water stored in pipes. And slowly weaved into the basin, and then the basin be the main, um, outlet control device. And ultimately, all the storm goes down into the large storm sewer. One thing I just asked the commission to realize about this site is the far north end of the site, it drops off about eight to nine feet. It's really sort of unusable from a, from a building standpoint because of the elevation change. It's helpful to us because it allows us to have a discharge for our stormwater, we need gravity to help. But we really can't put parking up there or anything like that because it's too low to be of any practical use. So I, I guess in short, what I'm trying to say is if the commission would require. Sixty parking spaces to, for the sixty units. Some additional for handicap, we can do that, we're probably going to have some form. Of underground detention.
John, how does that impact things? John, our engineer, city engineer?
Well, until we see the numbers, Mayor, uh, yeah, I, I don't know, Clarence is going to have to run those numbers. When he, uh, determines how much hard surface he has, as he said, there is a large storm sewer on the north end. A ten-foot diameter storm sewer, so we do have a good outlet for the project. It's just a matter of water quality and, uh. Uh, providing some, some retainage, ret- retention for the, uh, stormwater, but. I think it's doable, I think, I think Clarence, I think he understands the plan, um. There's a lot of green space out there as well on the, on the south end that we could also utilize possibly, so.
I have a question on the, is the fire lane, does that have a gate? I may have missed that when my wifi let out, but is there a gate or something that makes it a designated fire lane, or is it just marked as a fire lane?
It was just going to be marked as a fire lane, it was going to have signage that said, do not enter, fire exit only.
Okay, thank you.
But physically, if people want to ignore signage, they can. But we're really not trying to encourage anyone entering off of East River.
Now, if the neighbors complain that there's too much in and out because it's in between two residential houses, would you consider putting a fire gate at? That location, if it came down to it?
Yeah, and then you'd have to add a Knox box or something like that, those kind of things like we're done at, um, at other locations, so. If a gate was needed, a gate could be added and some sort of, uh, Knox box so that the fire department had the access that they need.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Um, Jim, how do you feel about the, the sixty number, is that the right number?
Jim Taylor?
Yeah.
I don't think I'm allowed to get any input in what I think's the right number, I think.
Advising as a, from a staff standpoint, as we look at long-term.
Right, from a, from a long-term perspective, if obviously you're looking at, I think Dawn pointed out, there's three to five people there, again. Transportation's different in Lorraine County, the, the sixty plus the three makes sense, and again, who knows thirty years from now? If it's repurposed or not, and again, if it's repurposed, one-bedroom units, in theory, could have a hu- a hundred and twenty, you probably never would, even in that case. Because of the way these places are designed, and even if it loses its purpose, it makes logical sense to do that sixty to sixty-three. We would need the applicant to agree to that, because of the, right now, the request is twenty-seven. So they would have to agree to modify that to the sixty-three, otherwise, we have to just vote on the twenty-seven.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Whitfield?
Yes.
Hi, this is, uh, Ben Ockner, I'm, uh, council for Pearl, yeah, for the developer here. And I, uh, appreciate the opportunity to weigh in, um, on this. And I'm very grateful to the city, uh, to Mr. Farkas and, and the rest of the staff and, and your honor, obviously, to, uh. For your consideration here, there are just a couple of things, a couple of points that I'd like to make, uh, and I, I, I. I'm going to make them appreciating, uh, your comments, that there's, a lot of hard work has gone into figuring out the number. I think first, um, I would encourage you and, and, and the rest of the commission to. Consider the actual evidence of the requirement, uh, for parking spaces. Um, the, the parking spaces are going to be for this use and this use only. Um, so, uh, we're not, uh, in the position of, uh, resolving any. Uh, parking issues in the, uh, in the immediate vicinity. And I think that, uh, based on what you've heard, um, I, I would, I would encourage the conclusion. And it, it's a reasonable one, that, uh, the number of spaces that have been requested, and I think that includes a mer- uh, uh, handicap parking. Is more than, uh, sufficient. Secondly, um, I note that, um, the, uh, zoning code allows for the. Um, uh, for conditions to be attached to variances. Now, I'm not sure about the planning commission's authority to do that, but your Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, has the authority to attach conditions. Um, and certainly one could be that, uh, parking, uh, provided for is, uh. Good so long as the use, uh, remains, uh, consistent as far as, uh, density and, uh, parking needs. Um, um, I would also, uh, add that, uh, I, I think that, um, the, uh. You've heard that the number of visitor parking, uh, spaces, I think Mr. Fark referred to that. I think that's been baked into the, uh, calculation by the developer as well. And, and lastly, I, I know that someone asked about land banking, uh, parking. Um, and again, with great respect to the work that you and the commission have done, uh, and we appreciate it. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any way that we could consider, uh, using land banking, uh, in, 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 in the hopes. Of preserving, uh, as much green space as possible while providing more than enough parking. Apart from that, uh, I, uh, I thank you, and I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, uh. I'm happy to answer any questions about your code that, um, uh. Council, uh, for the city may not, uh, know offhand, although I'm sure.
Thank you, oh, that's awesome, thank you for your feedback, that is, uh, appreciated. Um, you know, I, I'll speak to the, to the former point that was made around, um. You know, judging things, you know, making decisions based on how it's currently going to be used and things that are right in front of us. Um, I think that, um, in this case around parking, uh, that, that is, that is a true statement. Uh, but, eh, you know, as we make these decisions, even if you think about it from a zoning perspective. When we, when we change the usage of a space, we, we're changing it for the foreseeable future, so we're making decisions. Today that we're looking for, to live with for the next fifty years, so, um. You know, but I, I definitely get your point, and you know, what's right in front of you all right now is, you know, just the parking in this project. But, you know, it's our job as steward of the city to be thinking about fifty years from now, so, um. I, I do want to, uh, remain consistent with that request, but it, it's a full commission, so I, I, I can't make that decision for all of us, so. Uh, does anybody's perspective change in terms of, uh, ex- exploring this land banking and keeping with the twenty-seven spots or? Um, are relaxing on the, on the, uh, on the variance for the twenty-seven spots?
As to one of the comments Mr. Oxter brought up, I think he's correct, the Board of Zoning Appeals would have to do any kind of change where there's a change in the use in the future, we can't do that. Uh, as the land bank, it's not something we've done in the past, I'm not saying we can't do it. Um, again, I think, y- you've, you, the, the group has kind of talked about this, at least the internal part of the city about, you know, we. Could request the hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-two spots plus, plus the handicapper making a part of that. Just what I believe was, you know, again, based on Alaria, its needs, the future, the present, the transportation, the parking, et cetera. So, and again, it's, it's a decision for the board, it, you know, again, the requirement would be a hundred and twenty-two spots, which. Obviously, that's not been what we've been looking at, so, that's just my additional commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So again, I think Mr. Taylor posed the question prior to this was that, in order for us to, uh, wh- well, let me open up the floor, are there any more proponents? Are there any more proponents? Are hearing none, are there any opponents, are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? All right, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, in order for us to move forward with this variance, you would have to agree with it, so I heard two messages, yes and no, so. Would you be able to do the sixty, uh, parking spots and still be able to move this project forward?
Frank, I don't care, sixty or sixty-three, just so, let's be clear, let's be clear no matter which.
Sixty-three, yeah, I, I'm saying sixty individual slots, and then we'll let the law say how many, uh, handicap need to be added to that. If we believe it's sixty-three, we can say that, but I just didn't want to.
Daryl, Daryl, why don't you weigh in, if it's sixty, do we add, do we have to add the three or can be part of the sixty? I- if the board decides to say, we're going to meet him in the middle, and require sixty. Of those sixty, three have to be dedicated for handicap accessibility.
Okay, so we can keep it at the sixty.
Keep it at sixty and three of them, and you, you'll take care of being compliant, so sixty parking spots. Are you able to, would, is that something that you all can, um, still move forward?
The, this is Greg from Pearl, yes, well, we appreciate it, and yes, we can move forward.
Awesome, thank you, so, again, um, I'm going to go back to, uh. The request, so, um, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to request the variance section. One-one-seven-five-point-zero-six of the Alaria codified ordinance governing off-street parking and loading. Uh, from, uh, the hundred and twenty-four spaces to sixty, uh, parking spaces.
With, with the agreement of the applicant to, to that number of spots.
With the agreement of the applicant. Got a move by Don Cowherd?
Second.
Who's that?
Chad.
Second by, uh, Mr. Snyder. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, nay? And were there any abstentions? All right, motion carries, thank you, and thank you to the Pearl team, and, uh, looking forward to working together and the next phase of this, and, um. Uh, and I'm excited about it, and I think it's going to be a great asset to the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Whitfield and members of the commission.
Thank you.
All right, that was a nice forty-five minutes. Let's see, um. Let's get back to the agenda, excuse me, I'll get back to here, and all these materials are available online, if you're following this on YouTube or. Watching this later on, if you go on the City of Alaria website, there's a link to these materials, so you can look at them, follow along and read them. It's on the planning commission part of the website, um. So, uh, that was the minute, back to the agenda, all right? So next on the agenda is, uh, we did that, um, is Circle K. All right, so Circle K, hopefully this med- this part will be somewhat fast because there's some. I think there was just maybe some miscommunication on this, but we'll, we'll see. Um, so Circle K is requesting a, a rezone, uh, for some parcels, and this is right next to. School building, and, um, I don't want to steal any thunder, but I also just want to be, I don't want to waste people's time either. Um, our understanding, our, our understanding internally was that you were going to request, uh, for this rezone. After the school was constructed, so that we would be able to get a, a new traffic study to see what the traffic flow would be. And then we would reconsider this project once the school was completed. And so, um, just want to check back in because I, I thought that was the agreement, but then I saw we were back in there, so. Savannah, if you could maybe speak to that before we jump into all the reports.
Sure, uh, hello, my name is Savannah Vandicamp Pete, I don't know if you need me sworn in or my address for the record, but I.
Yeah, well, square you in the public office, yeah.
Okay.
You know, you'll know, be, no, I'm joking, go ahead, you continue.
Well, I just wasn't sure for Public Kings, um, so I'm a representative of Circle K, I'm the development manager responsible for this project. I know throughout a couple of meetings informally with city officials, and also, um, our last public hearings. That point was raised, uh, unfortunately, and I apologize that that wasn't made clear by our team, but. but we are unable to wait and contractually where we're at right now. We've due to COVID circumstances, we actually have extended our purchase agreement somewhat, but it is not feasible for us both where we're at with our lease uh on the store that exists across the street and where we're at with our purchase agreement to delay any longer. So we're definitely looking to.
No, no problem. No, no problem. Let's let's roll through. We'll we'll go through this and uh see where the commission stands. So uh, let's start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a recap of the previous meeting held um regarding uh the rezoning request for five different uh locations, one of which is 550 Abbey, parcel number 0625031114-063, 648 Abbey, parcel number 0625032114015, 652 Abbey, 0625032114016, 656 Abbey, parcel number 0625032114017, and a vacant lot located on the corner of Hilliard and Abbey, parcel number 0625032114-020. Parcel number 0625031114063 is currently zoned professional office district. Parcel numbers, last three digits, 015, 016, 017, and 020 are zoned residential residential medium density district, RMD. The request. The proponent is requesting all parcels listed herein be rezoned to business automotive oriented district, BAO, requirements of which can be found in the Alaria Codified Ordinance, section 1162. The purpose of a business automotive district is to accommodate and encourage those businesses, establishments, offering accommodations, services, goods to the public. The business automotive oriented district is most appropriately located adjacent to freeways, interchanges, intersections, and major thoroughfares. The principally permitted uses include automotive filling stations, automotive repairs and service, automotive sales, convenience businesses, drive-in facilities, fast food restaurants, off signs, restaurants, et cetera. My findings. Parcel numbers, last three digits, 015, 016, 017, and 020 are currently zoned residential medium density district, the requirements of which can be found in section 1144 of the Alaria Codified Ordinance. Per section 1144.01, it is the purpose of a residential medium density district to establish and maintain a high quality area within the city for homes with a medium population density district to preserve the existing residential neighborhood characterized by single household residences. The principally permitted uses are as follows. Agricultural, provided that such use is limited to non-commercial farming or crops of non-commercial animal husbandry, educational institutions, non-commercial recreation, religious place of worship, worship, single household detached dwelling units, et cetera. Parcel number 0625031114063 is currently zoned professional office district, the requirements of which can be found in section 1163 of the Alaria Codified Ordinance. Per section 1163.01 states, it is the purpose of a professional office district to provide a vehicle of various professions to locate offices in appropriate locations throughout the city. The city recognizes recognizes the desirability and convenience that may be provided by allowing these offices located in some areas previously reserved for residential development. The application of this district provides only professional office uses and provides adequate protection that no other commercial use may occupy the site zone POD in future years. The district establishes a minimum requirement and standard that must be followed to protect the professional office uses and adjacent residential uses. The principally permitted uses include allied health facilities, chiropractors' offices, dental, medical clinics, health unit office buildings, offices, public care centers, research and development laboratories, et cetera. All businesses and services shall be conducted wholly with an enclosed building except for off-street parking and loading. Findings continue. As these parcels lack an address, a lot consolidations and is needed, including any remainder parcel not incorporated into the scope of the project as to assure that one new parcel and address are properly assigned. It should also be noted that the request is for a rezoning of the parcels only and does not include any other zoning reviews governing setbacks, heights, parking, screening regulations, signage, et cetera. If the request is approved, a separate review report will be provided via design review process listing any deficiencies discovered. Staff recommendations. I would like to bring to the board's attention and reiterate the following comments that were incorporated into my last memo regarding planning commission case number 2019100142 held December 3rd, 2019 for the project reference herein. Comments are as follows. I received a zoning request for this site on June 21st, 2019. Among many of the inquiries was one regarding jurisdictional distance requirements slash restrictions to churches, schools, et cetera, for the sales of alcohol. My response was generalized and referenced the state regulations of which are enforced by the Division of Liquor Control. If the sales of alcohol is still part of the overall function of this project, it should be noted that the property would abut a new school and is in the proximity of churches and daycares located on Abbey. That's the rest of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Farkas. Uh, any other staff reports? All right, hearing none. Um, are there any other proponents, any other proponents? And we'll start with uh the team from Circle K. Savannah, I don't know if you want to.
Sure, yes. Uh, let me unmute myself. Thank you for the opportunity to appear today and discuss this project with you having us back. Um, I guess I'll start from the last, you know, point that Mr. Farkas made and that whereas our new location would abut a school and be catty corner from a church that also houses a daycare. Um, I'd just like to reiterate that we are an existing facility. We're located right across the street. We wouldn't even be applying for a new alcohol license. It would actually just transfer. Um, so I know sometimes that that's a concern for us. That's a concern when we're picking a new location. Will schools object? Will uh churches within a certain radius object? Uh, that's actually not the case here in that we've had no violations in the last five years. And uh, that alcohol license and tobacco license would just transfer right across the street to where we're intending to build. Uh, just I I guess a quick overview, and I don't know if anyone has our site plan that you can project up. If not, I can email it.
Yeah, which one? There's a bunch of exhibits.
Oh, it's exhibit H maybe might be the easiest to read. If you wouldn't mind. Yeah, so that's our colorized site plan. Um, it shows our layout, which is approximately 50, 200 square feet, 27 parking spaces with a total of two handicapped. And then this long rectangle that you see out front is our ceiling canopy with six dispensers. So the ability to serve 12 cars at a time. Um, a couple of takeaways that we incorporated after talks with the city and feedback from public hearings uh was to add fencing um along the where's north side that borders the school as well as uh the side that borders existing residential. Um, and the incorporation of a sidewalk that Circle K would pay for and maintain. Um, kind of alleviating, I know traffic was a concern, uh, so we offered to add a sidewalk. Katie, can you help me out or can we scroll down here? I know north. Yeah, north on the western side. So behind the store is where we're looking to add that sidewalk to allow children to be dropped off and have an easy go between off of Hilliard Road. So any questions from planning commission? I know this is not the first time that you've heard our request, but I I'm happy to address any minor.
So my quick question, this is the sidewalk you're referring to right here, right? This right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this would go from the school to the street?
Mm-hmm, yeah, with fencing on the other side.
Yeah, so again, this this part is about, I I just want to kind of reiterate and sound like Mr. Farkas. This part of the conversation is about the zoning. And if we think this is a good use for this to be zoned long-term for the city, I'll try to use your voice too and how you speak. Um, but that didn't work too well. All right, but um, that's the purpose of this part of the 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 discussion is if we think this is a good use. Now they've got, we've got, we'll go through their site plan.
Okay, sure. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's good because I think we need to visualize what this could potentially look like by zoning it this way. Um, so I'll, um, any questions from the commission? Then what we'll do is we'll open up the floor to proponents and then opponents, which I believe we do have some folks that want to speak, but any questions initially from the commission?
And if I could add one thing, I I'm so sorry, but you know, one thing that Mr. Farkas, you had said in your report was that this, these lots would need to be properly consolidated, which weren't able to do until we purchased them. Um, however, in doing so that and consolidating, once we own them, that does give us some flexibility in what we're able to do in terms of deed restrictions. Um, dictating and kind of guiding what future use would be. So anytime we build a new location, we plan to be there for 50 plus years. But if legally, whatever I'm able to do to, you know, protect us and our business and make the city feel comfortable, um, I'm certainly willing to add language into our deed and and its use as approved by the city.
Mayor, if I may, that would be a great question for Jim as our ordinance if rezoned business automotive. If this were rezoned by the board and Circle K pulled out, this would open the door for any other use permitted for business automotive. Now, we could not stop that from the zoning aspect, but from a legal aspect, if it's attached to a deed restriction, I don't know what supersedes what.
My my only comment, obviously if you build the service station there, that's the logical use for it to actually dig out the dig out the tanks, tear it down and repurpose it. I would assume unless it stays a gas station, because this is business automotive. If if anybody else buys this and wants to turn it into a shopping center, it's got to be rezoned, correct, Darryl? Because business automotive would not allow that.
Well, one of the uses permitted, as earlier in my report, it would permit an automotive repair shop.
Sure.
It would convenience business, drive-in facilities, fast food, just to name a few.
Right.
So anything that would fit that bracket of a business automotive, including a gas station, would be permissible per the zoning code.
Correct.
And again, I'm not an attorney for Circle K, but I will say when this has come up in the past, I think there's what it can be zoned for. And when we own something, I try to restrict it as much as possible against competitors going there. So I can see what what language I'm allowed to share, but um, you know, if there's certain uses that the city of Alaria wouldn't be comfortable for, I'm happy to incorporate that as much as I can because it benefits Circle K as well.
Right. I'm not sure from that list, Darryl, that you just repeated, there's anything in there that other than maybe an auto repair shop's obviously a little bit different. And but obviously a lot less traffic, et cetera. You don't have all those issues. I'm not sure there's anything you'd want to restrict from there. That would be something the committee could look at. I don't see, I mean, if it's fast food, it's going to be similar traffic, that type of McDonald's wants to come there. Obviously, those type of things, but you're going to not change traffic flow. Um, don't have the same issues with the school per se with McDonald's that you would with a gas station because of because of alcohol, et cetera. But I'm not sure if I see the need for any deed restrictions unless the council, the committee wants to do that.
Well, for further input, this snippet that I provided in my memo does not list all the permitted uses. I generalized it applicable to what was proposed. I did include some for the board's use. If they were curious as to what else would be permitted, I did list some of them because there are quite a few more that could be principally permitted or conditionally permitted depending on what's proposed.
And I guess I would just add, I'm amenable to, you know, conditions being attached to our zoning approval. Uh, was there a need for us to restrict against certain uses for the cities?
The only problem with doing that today without no, without commission, with the committee actually reviewing all those, it's kind of hard for me to sit, we, unless Darryl wants to read them all off and we want to make that an issue at this point.
Absolutely. No, 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 that was, I'm not trying to open a can of worms, just.
Yeah. Yeah, at the at this point, it would just be the 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 basic use that we're talking about now.
Agreed.
Okay.
Business.
I will also say, you know, God forbid, we're Circle K to leave this location. We're required by law within a year to pull any tanks.
Correct.
Uh, that are underground so that it kind of goes to that point of it. Were it to be another gas station, I think they'd have to reapply for the use and putting those tanks underground. They wouldn't be using ours.
Savannah, if I may ask a question, I don't recall the car wash being part of the original submittal. What was that, something that was changed during the revision?
Um, no, as far as I'm concerned, the car wash was was always, yeah, part of our plan.
I must have had that blended with another review. But okay.
It looks different with how we colored everything. Um, but no, that was, as far as I'm concerned, that was always part of the plan. This is an ideal location for a car wash.
I I have a question, Savannah.
Yes, sir.
I I see, I I know you mentioned the fencing that's going to run to the north side of the property separating
Mm-hmm.
from the school, uh, and then the new sidewalk, which I think is a great idea. Will will there, will it be fencing running parallel to that sidewalk uh uh blocking access from, you know, that rear driveway into that into that uh, into that sidewalk area?
On the western side as well, you're saying kind of running along the sidewalk? Yes, so there there is an intention to do that. I think we terminated at a certain point and I can't say exactly where. I'm trying to zoom in here uh for visibility and safety reasons with cars entering and exiting. But 100%, I mean, the city brought that up in an earlier meeting and meeting and we were happy to offer that screening both for residents um and just safety of children walking, walking along.
Right, so so we have, to be clear, we have a, we have a fence running the north side of the property and a fence that'll run the west side parallel with the new sidewalk that was added.
Mm-hmm, six-foot white vinyl fencing is what was proposed.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, are there any other?
I have one, sorry. Um, on this walkway, are there any, like, your store obviously faces the front and all the glasses to the front. Is there any glass where like your clerk can kind of monitor what's going on behind this gas station, especially if kids are going back and forth into a campus?
Um, our typical prototype does not have windows on along the back of the store. Um, there is a door there that's used for entering and exiting of employees. Um, I do know that we have security cameras on the back of the building. Glass is not a standard part of our layout, um, and that's really for store safety as well. So, no.
Savannah, the to the to the west of the sidewalk, how how much property will you guys own beyond net? Say say beyond beyond the sidewalk to the west.
I I hear your question. I don't know that I can answer that off the top of my head. I do have one of our engineering staff on with us. I'm not sure that she's able to unmute. Could you give me just a second?
It looks like from the drawing, it shows 11 foot down on the uh closer to Hilliard and 21 foot on the up by the school.
The green, the green markings of the plot plan ends, I believe.
It's 11 feet from the five-foot walk, so that would be like 17 feet from the parking lot.
Okay, bless you guys for being able to read that scale. I'm on my laptop.
That property will butt right up against somebody's residence right now, a a current homeowner.
And hence why we are, yeah, certainly willing to do the screening. And I will say, we have a couple of our residents on the line. Uh, some people that we have under contract and then I'm seeing a couple of other names of homeowners and I'm sure they'll get their opportunity to speak to their feelings about um, the project and their neighborhood as well.
Okay, all right.
But I I I see that you're on. Yes, thank you.
Did you say your engineer was on the line?
Yes, Katie, sorry to put you on the spot. Are you able to unmute?
Katie, what's her last name?
Weller, Catherine Weller.
Yep.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Thank you. Sorry again, Katie, to, I hope everything's working on your end.
I hope so.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. What was the question?
Okay, Katie, so what I had asked was the, was there a property uh to the immediate west of the new sidewalk?
Yes, as shown on the site plan, um, the lower portion, the of the site plan, there is 11 feet and on the upper. site plan, there is eleven feet and on the upper portion is twenty-one feet.
Gotcha. All right.
Any other question from the commission members? All right. Are there any other, are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? All right. Are there any opponents? Any opponents?
Hi, Frank. This is Ann Schloss, Superintendent Alaria Schools.
Hi, Superintendent Schloss. How you doing?
Good, good. And please correct me if I'm wrong, because I know there's differences between the zoning meeting and the the city council. But I again wanted to express our concern first and foremost with the traffic situation. We did do a traffic study with nothing being on that corner as far as a busy gas station car wash. And there was so much concern that we had to move our right in, right out at that time. I believe some of the numbers were twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand cars at that corner every day. I still, you know, while I appreciate the fact that they've, they've designed a sidewalk to that, and you know, I just got this. So to be able to see how that works out with how our inner, you know, mapping of our ring road and everything else, you know, I I am still concerned because they, they will still have to cross on either side, some of those drive driveways, which would then make the need for possibly more crossing guards and everything, which is an expense to the district also. But I I really believe that, you know, I know it is the current liquor license. The Circle K has been there. And I know that that many believe it. It's not as big a deal since it's just right across the street. But what I do know is the easier, you know, that that people can get to things, the the more frequently they will. So we do have some concerns with our, our kindergarten through eighth grade students. I'm also do have a question. I know there's a fence along the west side of the property line there. But would there be a fence also along the driveway? So I guess essentially there would be two fences and that sidewalk would be alone in between two fences. I didn't, I wasn't sure if that was the case.
Ms. Schloss, I can address that. So yes, the intention is, and again, we're flexible, we're open to recommendations. The intention based on feedback from the city was to put up a fence, obviously with entrance for the sidewalk a- along the north side of our parcel. And then, yes, to fence and screen the residential from our project as well along the west side.
But is there one along the driveway on the east side of the sidewalk?
Okay, I see what you're saying. Um, Katie, I don't know that we have one. I definitely think that something like a four and a half foot wrought iron fence could be added. I know we show curbing. That's definitely something that that I know we're not talking about our site plan. We're talking about zoning right now.
Oh, and that, I I was just, that was just a question I had. Overall.
No, no, and and keep going. That's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Answer the question.
Certainly, that's something that I have flexibility with.
Yeah, that's a long way for those kids to be, shall I say, unseen.
And I have a five-year-old. I like, trust me.
I'm concerned and I appreciate the question Mr. Schneider had about the glass building. I believe that was Chad. I am still overall concerned with the in and out, the amount of traffic and the safety of our children. And first and foremost, that is, that is how we feel. These, um, these gas station, car wash, convenience stores, I watch people pull in and pull out of these things. And, um, you know, we're still going to have students walking along Abbey and along Hilliard. So, so even with the sidewalk, which again, I appreciate the effort, I think we still have huge issues for kids, plus the traffic itself. And and I don't know, I know when we did the traffic study, there were also concerns with the the fire department right there, and and we had to move quite a few things. So that is the stance of the district. And and I appreciate being heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Yeah, I will add one consideration. The sidewalk's optional if we feel that that's going to be more of a hindrance than an asset. It's easily, you know, removed from our site plan. I will say one major change, and maybe this is why the car wash looks a little different, is we did upon recommendation from the city and the engineer, we added a ride-in, ride-out along Abbey Road. So whereas we had had that as full access, just kind of taking feedback from the city on how that is now, how they anticipated being with the school, we went ahead and just added the pork chop and made that a ride-in, ride-out, hoping to alleviate any traffic issues before they occurred at that, at that location.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Any other opponents?
Mr. Wirfield, this is Joanne Whirling. I own a building across the street on Hilliard.
Okay.
My husband and I. I am concerned with the traffic. Traffic already on Hilliard at that light is already heavy. So even though we put in a ride-in, ride-out on Abbey, anyone coming from the south going to the north is going to enter off a Hilliard now. So that's going to put more traffic on the Hilliard. You got the Dairy Queen going there. A lot of people go down to that Dairy Queen. It's already difficult to get in and out of our building across the street. So I am concerned with the additional flow of traffic onto Hilliard.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Any other opponents? Any other opponents? Again, you know, my recommendation, you know, as a staff, as a commission member, I I think it's too early for this. And we were willing to table and wait until to see how the traffic was impacted by the schools. You know, as a father who has to cross his kids to to another school and the traffic nightmare we deal with trying to cross kids and it's, I get anxiety every day about kids crossing in front of cars. And it's, this is just a tough, this is a tough case to make of 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 an operation that's actually encouraging cars to come in and out of, you know what I mean? Like a store, you you drive in, you sit in for a while, you know, maybe no cars, but literally like encouraging, come get your car washed, come get gas and just more and more traffic coming through here and just little kids crossing this, you know, I just, it just doesn't seem to fit. And I know we we tried to come up with some creative solutions of a sidewalk, but I just think at this time, I I'm not comfortable moving forward with it and voting for it. And so, you know, we can table it until the school is done. I understand your time constraints. But if you want us to continue with this vote today, you know, you, you'll get a no vote from me. So.
Is there any way to do, I I'd like to add a couple of comments. And then is there any way to get a straw vote before we we put it? That's the thing.
I like that. No, you can, we can't do that.
You can give commentary from each of the members.
Can make the comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's an actual thing. But but we'll say, you know, looking at our site plan, it's heavily marked directionally. So convenience and safety are the two of the cornerstones that our business is built on. You know, making sure that it's easy for people to access our, our store and our services, but but also safe. So, you know, please do note that, look at the arrows, a ton of consideration and money goes into the engineering of those things.
So so we're going to go ahead and and move forward the vote. So.
I think, any other comments from any committee members?
All right. So let me.
Well, I do have a question. So.
Savannah, your time is 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 up.
Well, my question is.
Thank you. So this, the proponent is requesting that all parcels listed be rezoned to a business automotive oriented district. The requirements of which.
Mayor, I apologize to interrupting.
But you are, and it's a point of order right now. And I'm asking that the, we do the roll call vote now.
The opportunity, I'd like tabled or.
Just like in any public forum, when there's, there's protocols to it. And right now, where we appreciate you being here, but if you're not able to abide by those protocols, we're going to actually have to remove you from the meeting.
Frank, Frank, we we don't have, just so you know, and we didn't, I don't mean to maybe make it short, we don't have any protocol in the sense of how many minutes someone can speak to mine.
No, no, I'm referring to in terms of that, when a person is given the opportunity to speak and as the chair moving forward the agenda and someone trying to reverse back the agenda to another area. So just as a point of order. If this was, if we were in the physical together, we would have turned off the mic, we would have asked that person to be quiet, we would have said, we're moving forward, we wouldn't allow that person to keep disrupting the meeting. That's what I'm referring to.
Your, your, your call, again, if it's a short one or two points of reference, just so we don't have issues with appeals, et cetera. I'm not a, I would not object to having, again, a thirty-second commentary.
Savannah, you got thirty seconds to go ahead and share what you would like.
Thank you. I guess my questions were in terms of our options of being voted on today or tabling. What are our options? Were we to go ahead with the vote today? What's the re, assuming that we were voted down, what's the reappeal process like?
That's a fair question. That's a fair, that's, that's procedural, not, yeah.
Thank you.
So if you go forward today and it's turned down, you have the right to appeal this, obviously, to city council, okay? And then there's actually a appeal to court down the road. If you went that route. If you table it for your traffic study, et cetera, obviously, we just come back to it. We have to have your permission to table it. And then we just would reset the meeting for what be the appropriate time after whatever has to be accomplished. Or if you withdraw it, then you can withdraw it right now and 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 go forward. But if you go forward, it's turned down, you have to appeal. You, you know, it would be starting over from scratch. Most people appeal if they get turned down because that decision's been made.
Okay, thank you. I guess the only question I would have was.
Jim, I want to clarify something real quick. So as a, as a commission, we can still vote no matter what, correct?
Well, we, what I'm saying, she's, she's saying if we, if we go forward, what are her, what are the, what are the applicant's options? Yeah, we're, we're going to vote unless they withdraw or they, or they ask to hold it in abeyance while additional work is being done.
But even if we do, even if we, if if they would request for it to be withdrawn or tabled, we can still move forward and vote.
No, no, there would be no vote.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so at this time, I am not requesting to table. I would like to go ahead and move forward with the vote. I will ask that if a traffic study is a concern, that it be made a conditional part of our rezon approval.
Say, say that again now. Your application is what your application is. You can't amend the application without, without us agreeing to that amendment.
But conditions can be applied to our approval.
To your approval.
And it's not, let's see what the vote is. Let's see what, that's why we have to vote and then then go from there. So so I'm going to go ahead and go with the roll call vote on this again. And so picking back up, the proponents requesting all parcels listed be rezoned to a business automotive oriented district, which can be found in court and in the codified ordinance, section one-one-six-two. And the rezoning request is for the property at five-fifty Abbey Road, six-forty-eight Abbey Road, six-fifty-two Abbey Road, six-fifty-six Abbey Road and a vacant lot. So is there a motion to approve? Is I'm still, is this still a motion to approve? So this is to get it on the floor, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to to get this on the floor? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, moved by Derek. Is there a second?
This is only to make it votable, correct?
This is just to hear the question.
Okay, second.
All right. Any questions? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
And any abstentions? All right. So we have a vote of one yet, one vote yes and one, two. Dom, what was your vote? I think you might have been muted. You were muted.
I voted nay at this time.
Nay. So nay at this time. So one, two, three, four, four nays. All right. So again, thank you for your time. We'll follow up on what the process is. You can communicate with Mr. Taylor here and Mr. Farkas. And we can, you know, share with you with the appeal processes and and take things to the next step there. And we'll continue on with the agenda.
And that appeal would be done with city council, correct?
That would be, Darryl, correct. The next step is back to council.
Okay, thank you.
To my knowledge, it goes to city council.
It does, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And next on the agenda is a summary of reports of of design review applications that have been approved by the staff. And there's no need to, to any questions, any commission members have on any of these design review applications that have been approved? Okay, all right. Any other staff or commission member reports?
I have none at this time.
Neither do I.
Well, thank you all for your time and getting through this meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second by Battle.
Moved by Mr. Schneider, second by Mr. Battle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. I'll vote nay. I want to keep this meeting going. No, I'm joking.
No more.
No, I'll take care. Thank you all for everything. And I'll, I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.